We'll put it on Facebook, we'll do what we can to kind of get the information out to kind of go over. There's a lot of information that is going to be shared with us this evening. Council and staff have obviously been working together on different parts of this. Today it kind of all comes under the heading and so there is a, just for the council, just to share with you, there are, Scott Soroka is going to be kind of leading us off and he'll be, I almost want to call him our emcee, introducing different people as they come up to talk about different pieces of this project or future ideas. And then what I'd ask for council to do is please take notes because what we'd like to do is kind of let them kind of go through their presentations to us and then if you want to ask questions at some point in time, we'll kind of wait at the end and then do that and then we can each have, each council member will be given an opportunity to make a statement or anything if they'd like. I do have something I'm going to read and then we'll kind of go from there. Okay? So with that Scott, I'm going to turn it over to you and you can get us going. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Scott Soroka. I am the Communications Manager here with the City of Cottage Grove. Mayor, council members, we really appreciate the opportunity tonight to present some information to you regarding a potential community center here in the City of Cottage Grove. As you are all well aware, this has been a conversation within the community for more than a decade and in the interest of keeping our presentation under 500 slides, we are going to concentrate on data that we've received in the last three years. In the last three years, staff has been guided by elected officials, consultants, financial stewardship, and also, most importantly, community members and residents. Tonight, we will chronologically brief you on a number of items including: community involvement, community engagement, site selection, infrastructure analysis. We'll take a closer look at the shops at Cottage View. We'll look at building possibilities. We will detail the most recent study we've received, which is the ANA Research Study, conducted here in the City of Cottage Grove, and we'll have a brief statement from the YMCA as well. Finally, we will conclude our presentation by presenting to you six different options. They are six diverse options based on the diversity of input that we received from our community members within the last three years, also based on a number of studies and analysis that we have done internally as a staff. At the end of that, we will also detail the financial implications of the six options. Not many people in the city know more about this conversation than our Parks and Recreation Director Zach Doctor. He will start us off by talking a little bit more about how we got started within the last three years. Thank you.
Community involvement, the slide says, "Community involvement," and that is a pretty simple term, but we worked really, really hard to make sure we engaged the community in this entire process, we call the community center. We met with residents in the places they frequent, we held public meetings, we met them in their homes through computers, TVs, phones, mailings, direct mailing, social media, et cetera. So we worked really hard to get to the people where they were at. But it's all started with the city council's preparation for the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. The council launched a My Future Cottage Grove Project in 2017, essentially asking residents, what do residents want and what trends will impact the City of Cottage Grove for the future. When that My Future Cottage Grove Study was complete, over 3,729 community comments were received and the overriding theme was residents want more retail, more recreation, and housing diversity. Of the top 10 desires, two were related to the community center. So the council chose 23 volunteers to serve on a community center task force. That community center task force was designed to examine the community center, provide council with the framework to make decisions on a community center, study what the purpose of a community center might be, and then determine what truly are the needs of Cottage Grove that a community center could help serve. One of the biggest, one of the biggest items the task force explored was partnerships. Some of the partnerships that were discussed but perhaps didn't come to fruition were the South Washington County Telecommunications Commission, National Guard Armory, and the Boys and Girls Club. Some of the items, some of the partnerships that are still being discussed or are still in limbo or being discussed are Washington County Library, Independent School District 833, youth athletic associations, multiple youth athletic associations, Youth Service Bureau, and the YMCA. And I should mention, the Boys and Girls Club actually is still a potential partner. And then as we moved into the feasibility report, which you'll learn more about, there was a market study that was performed for that, done by an independent company called Ballard King, and really their goal was to provide a gap analysis to the city to review. So comparing Cottage Grove trends to national and regional trends and then identifying what is Cottage Grove lacking in recreational opportunities and what community recreational needs are currently adequately filled. So this is just one example of one of the pieces of data that was received. So this talks about recreation spending potential, so compares Cottage Grove to the primary service area and then also the state of Minnesota and national. Another example, one of the many examples that could be shared, but participation rates for Cottage Grove and different recreational activities, very specific activities, and once again, just comparing Cottage Grove to national and regional data. Essentially, the market study results showed that local demographics support current and future development of more recreational opportunities and that also identified some of the top needs identified in the study as indoor playground, community spaces, and performance space, and indoor pool.
So when I started with the City of Cottage Grove in December, I started asking people, and it was kind of an informal poll, but how do people in Cottage Grove communicate? And it was unscientific, but 100% of respondents said Facebook. And so that is one of the venues that we use to conduct a lot of our community outreach. And I will take you through some of that community outreach at this time. One of the things we also wanted to keep in mind as a staff is that we didn't want to just talk to people through computers and we made a very robust effort to get out in the community, to be accessible and transparent, and talk with community residents, community members and residents about some of their ideas and answer some of their questions that they may have at a certain point in the process. So I will start in the spring, but I also want to mention that a very wise attorney also gave us a guiding principle as we started this outreach. Our role was to educate and not advocate. And so that is one of the things we really kept in mind as we went out in the community to talk about a potential community center and we were working under the direction of the community. So I'll take you through a few of those numbers. I know you guys have seen these numbers before. We did conduct a Facebook internet poll and we provided community residents with 11 amenity choices. And what we did is we asked them to rank those in order and so they were able to do that online to actually move their top choices and order to make a list of what they prioritized as potential amenities and a potential community center. We were actually very impressed and surprised a little bit that we had 1,744 survey participants, kind of exceeded our expectations. But again, as we mentioned, we really wanted to make sure we were out in the community talking to residents as well and conducted more than 200 face-to-face interactions, again, talking about possible amenities. As you can see some of the top, you can see the top three that were chosen by residents: indoor pool 1, indoor playground 2, and gymnasium. And these are a full set of numbers that we received, both from our internet polling and also from community interactions rounding out the top six in fourth, outdoor park space, fifth, fitness center, and sixth, community rooms. So that was some of the outreach we did. We did not, at this time in the spring, the month of March, we did not conduct any financial polling, but we were planning on doing that in the future. I should also mention as well, some of the venues that we use for our community face-to-face interactions. We were at the senior living facilities in town. We went to all of the commission meetings that the city holds with the various commissions, Arts Commission, Planning Commission, and such. One of our staff members, our Recreation Manager, did a lot of polling within the organization internally. We did that for two reasons. One, to make sure that our staff and our workers were well-versed in the community center and the amenities and what we were asking of the community to participate, and also because many of our staff members are residents in the City of Cottage Grove. As I had mentioned, we did not have any plans to do any financial analysis at this point, but we were prepared to answer questions. And so here to take us through some of our talking points at that point in time in the spring is our Finance Director, Robyn Rollin.
Thanks Scott. So nobody ever wants to talk about money. We just wanted to have in our back pocket during the amenity conversation, some very broad brush numbers. Nothing specific, nothing specific to what the amenities cost individually or put together. We wanted an idea of a very broad scope for what a similar project might cost for taxpayers if they were to say, at a meeting, "Well, how much is this going to cost me?" So we went with a $300,000 home and the annual impact of a $15 million project or a $30 million project. And what it would be for 20-year GO bonds that came about because of a referendum, and again, just a ballpark. And these are based on the estimated 2020 levy that we are just now talking about with regard to the budget. On a $300,000 home, we estimated that a $30 million project would impact the taxpayer on their city taxes, $178 a year, approximately $14.83, not approximately, actually, $14.83 per month. This range between a $15 million project and a $30 million project was anywhere from $8 to almost $15 per household for a $300,000 home.
And so a few months after that initial study on the amenities and the polling that we conducted, we did do some financial outreach and we used the same venues as we did previously, a Facebook internet poll and also some face-to-face interaction. The two questions that we asked our residents at this time, and I'll give them to you verbatim, "How much of a monthly property tax increase would you be willing to pay for a community center?" And the second question being, "How much would you be willing to pay per month in fees to use an aquatic facility and/or fitness facility?" We had 913 total participants and 119 of those were conducted by face-to-face interactions at our Spring Business Showcase hosted by The Chamber. In that venue, we actually gave residents an iPad and what they could do is they could answer those questions, but also they could ask questions before they answered them. So there were staff there on hand to answer questions that residents may have had at that time. Some of the common questions that we got throughout this process, whether it was the first or second outreach, is where will it be placed? How much will it cost? We also heard a lot about other things, you know, impact on taxes, but then some people actually wanted to talk about construction and easement. So we were out there talking about everything, but focused primarily on the community center and what questions that residents may have. And here's some of the information we gathered from the survey. You can see 41% of people asked about that property tax increase were willing to pay a $10 per month tax increase for a potential community center. 16% stated that they were willing, were not willing to pay any increase and then you can see it kind of tiers from there in between. As far as monthly fees are concerned, 33% was the highest generated number, $30 to $50 per month for a single membership. 4% were willing to pay $50 to $70 per month for a single membership. There were also 21% of respondents who did say, "I wouldn't use this facility regardless of any fees." So that is a snapshot of our financial analysis that we conducted. I believe that was in March, April, May, and we spent about a month gaining these numbers so that we could use them to further educate and move through the process. And so one of the things that we talked a lot about was site selection. As you guys all are well aware, that we looked at more than a dozen sites and here to take us through that process and how things kind of played out through our outreach and our analysis is our Acting Community and Economic Development Director, Christine Costello.
So to begin, when the community center task force was looking at locations, they looked at a total of 10 potential sites throughout the community. And then upon vetting the sites and looking at those amenities that were being proposed, it was clear that we needed to look at sites with over 10 acres. So as part of that, we narrowed that down in March of 2019, four sites, three of which are located, the Shops at Cottage View area, and then the four site being located north of the Hero Center location. The reason the Shops at Cottage View location was chosen is due, one in part, to the Comprehensive Plan designation, which designates that as mixed use. The connectivity to existing parks and trail systems, so the area is near existing residential, so we have trail connections through there, and then the Cottage Grove Ravine Regional Park across the street. As well as, this area kind of serves as a major presence, I feel, if you're on Highway 61 coming into the community, say from Hastings, the Afton area. So to go through the locations, Site 1 here is proposed, it was more towards the north property line of the Shops at Cottage View area. And the blue section shown to the north, that is actually on a different property. So it's everything from the nine-acre site south is considered the Shops at Cottage View location. Again, the visibility with the topography, the site kind of rises as you drive further north, also that trail connection and park connection to Ravine Regional Park across the street. Site number two is again along Keats Avenue, slightly further south. And this site was looked at, it is closer to the roundabout, but it's, for lack of better terms, a bit landlocked in terms of kind of the inner road network that would need to be there for the Shops at Cottage View once that developed. And finally, the third site is again near the roundabout, but along East Point Douglas Road. This site is very highly commercial sought-after, retail-wise, so it has a higher land value for commercial-type use. So with that, we also looked at a four site, which is the one here north of the Hero Center. As you can see, there is a line running through the property. This is a transmission line and that's federally regulated and there's concerns with that in terms of what can be developed underneath it. So if you were to develop on this site, you need to acquire more land in order to get community center amenities. Therefore, we hired Landform to develop a master plan for the Shops at Cottage View area. We did this as part of economic development and marketing. We wanted to develop a master plan because of this area being available for the chance to do retail, housing, office, potential community center. We market the plan in Vegas at our ICSC as well as Ming Car Expo. Master plan is basically a placeholder for development. It kind of demonstrates development can take place, it can happen. You don't have to keep per the letter of the law, for example, the East Ravine Master Plan that was done in the early 2000s. You're now seeing that come to fruition. So again, it served as that placeholder for that guiding document for development. On the screen before you is the master plan. You can see kind of in the northwest corner, proposed high-density development. There's existing single-family residential, so that serves as a good transition. As you transition south of the roundabout, there's a variety of uses for mixed use, entertainment, hotel. And then in the northeast corner, we're showing where you could have a placeholder for a community center. Again, with this, having that housing element kind of has a built-in customer base for the uses that are there. This is an illustrative view if you were at that roundabout, looking towards Highway 61. It shows that the development proposed is drivable for the whole community, but we also want to make it walkable for those that are living in the area as well, so it can be used by all. Again, here's another illustrative image that shows that retail on the first floor, that's pedestrian-friendly, still accessible by vehicle for the whole community. Lastly, we have a good relationship with the landowner, has always been willing to work with us and sit down and meet. In our discussions with him, he was willing to reduce the land price to a dollar per square foot or roughly $700,000 if we provided some additional infrastructure that extended Ravine Parkway down to East Point Douglas Road. This extension of roadway will hopefully spark additional development in the area to see this plan hopefully come to fruition like we see with the East Ravine Master Plan. And for that, I will let engineering talk additionally about infrastructure.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So early on in this process, we did start looking at infrastructure costs and different options to serve a potential community center. And really, a lot of the focus was at the Shops at Cottage View site, mostly due to the different options from cost and layout and how the site could be served. And just real briefly, before I talk about the work that was done, I want to highlight a few of the projects that have been done to date to make investments, you know, in this area. In 2013, we reconstructed East Point Douglas Road up to Walmart and then Walmart also had its construction and we bran, brought the trunk utilities down to Cottage View Drive at that time. In 2017, in partnership with Washington County, you know, we made a fairly significant investment in this area with the construction of that six-legged roundabout. That dealt with a pretty major traffic and safety issue in that area and this allowed the permanent connection of East Point Douglas Road to Keats Avenue and we also brought the water and sewer utilities along the roadway, so we had that ability to serve the Shops at Cottage View site. And the screen in front of you, this is our original look at the infrastructure costs. We took a look at 2040 comp planning land uses. At this point, the Landform Master Plan wasn't complete. We came up with the layout in front of you for the Cottage View Drive that would connect from East Point Douglas Road up to Keats Avenue and then Ravine Parkway would go to the north. Based on the traffic patterns and the traffic volumes that we anticipated, that yellow arrow we determined would have to be a partial access into the site and to get a full access into the community center site would be at that purple arrow. So that required everything in blue to be constructed at that time. Trunk utilities would follow Cottage View Drive. We want to follow a known kind of future roadway, so we have them in the correct location. And also, there was some reconstruction needed at the Cottage View Drive entrance to set it up for a future signal and with the utility work going on, it'd be most cost-effective to do it at this time. That had a total cost of about $5.5 million. And following the Landform Master Plan being completed, we took a new look at the traffic based on the uses that were identified. And with that, we were able to set up the infrastructure in a way that had a full access at that yellow arrow that you can see on the screen, so there was less street that was required to be constructed day one. Also, we followed this trunk utility route that you can see that would follow local roadway, Ravine Parkway likely coming from the roundabout south to East Point Douglas Road. That reduced the total cost, upfront cost of $2.6 million. And our second cost revision, as Christine mentioned, working with the landowner in negotiations for that, you know, purchase of the community center site, it was that request to have that local roadway built from this roundabout Cottage View Drive Ravine Parkway intersection down to East Point Douglas Road, following that local or the trunk utility route. So this included construction of everything highlighted in blue, so you'd have that roadway coming up from East Point Douglas Road to the roundabout and then out to Keats Avenue. And this really would set up the site in a way to have access in both East Point Douglas Road and Keats Avenue and spur potential development and not have to force everyone to come off of Keats Avenue.
So sticking with this site, we started to look at different building possibilities. And one of the partners that we've been working with throughout this process is Leo A. Daley. And so they can kind of, they'll join us now to talk a little bit about, you know, how these parts can come together. They can come together in a multitude of different ways and so Todd Lavold with Leo A. Daley will take us through some of those possibilities.
Thanks. Good evening. As maybe mentioned previously, we did do many studies, fit studies on the previous four sites, but when it became evident that the Shops at Cottage View site was the preferred site, we dug deeper into trying to understand what this site actually would do, could mean for this community center. So we dug in deeper to really understand the potential of it. What you're seeing here is just one plan of many different plans that we looked at, but I think the evidence here is that we really, through all the groups that we heard from, that is important to push the mass of the building towards the intersection of Keats and the new intersection with Ravine Parkway for, to get high visibility for any potential partners in the future. That was very important from everyone we heard. So what that did was it created kind of an extended site and we really wanted to make sure that this was a walkable area to really fit in well with the Shops at Cottage View vision. So we created a, basically a linear park that connected to the pedestrian area and the main street of the Shops at Cottage View. But when we go back to what the vision of this community center is supposed to be, I think everyone, no matter what amenities are involved in this project, the number one thing was to be a gathering place and a center for the community. So it all started with the Commons area that you see in the middle highlighted. And what we tried to do in this plan was to create a linear park that terminated at the Commons and then created a backyard, if you will, on the backside for outdoor spaces to spill out on the Commons. Couple other things is, we looked at a coffee shop as part of this project as well as a third-party coffee shop and to see how that could activate the rest of the Commons area and become an amenity for the community as a whole, but also for the community center as well. So we accommodated drive-throughs for that as well and then tried to integrate a patio and then indoor playground area for that. One of the key things too, I think, on this location that the group thought was very important was the intersection with the opportunity to connect the trail system of Ravine Parkway with the trail system of Cottage Grove. And again, it kind of terminates at the Commons area. A few highlights of that. So this was kind of a Phase 1 plan, oops, and a Phase 2 plan would look at potentially, what does it look like if a future partner, if the center or the YMCA or somebody were to come in afterwards too. We left room up in the north side of the site for expansion and then the parking lot obviously would be expanded to accommodate that. And again, the southwest corner too, we were proposing to have kind of an outdoor space for events, things like that, that can really activate the whole site and make the whole site become more visible. When the expansion could happen, we also looked at kind of expanding the backyards, if you will, and creating a series of backyards that open up onto Keats Avenue to, again, bring, make visible the activities of the community. And here's just a few vignettes that we put together that kind of might try to start to explain how the Commons can open up into a backyard, if you will, and potentially maybe a pool in the future, having a sun deck on that side as well. So those are some of the things that we looked at. We really were trying to make this site, again, be the gathering place for the community and I think that's the, no matter what amenities were part of it, that was the key goal there. We did take a look to, just quickly, taking a look at a coffee shop on the southeast corner, so, excuse me, the southwest corner, to see how that might integrate into the whole property as well, all things otherwise being equal. I think that worked out pretty well too for a future coffee shop, a kind of standalone coffee shop, to help kind of activate that whole site again. And again, a future, a future fitness area. We did look at a sports dome on several sites. We did circle back to look at what this site could, how a sports dome could fit on this site as well. In this case, we put it up in the northeast corner to tuck it away from the rest of the Shops at Cottage View and push the mass of the building to the southeast and then allowed for future partnerships to happen south of that and again, the prime area for visibility. So we felt that this was a pretty good solution to, again, be part of Shops at Cottage View but also stand on its own in the very prominent corner that would be created with this development.
So as you can see, throughout this process, many things changed. We explored a lot of different ideas and every time we had a new idea or some new analysis, we would run back to finance and ask Robyn to crunch the numbers. So we started with an original operational analysis that was con- So we started with a, an original operational analysis that was conducted by Ballard King. And joining us once again, but not for the last time, Finance Director Robin Volant.
So Ballard King did a lot of the legwork on this, so I didn't have to. They did an operational analysis of, back in April. Actually, they were doing it in March, but they gave us the results in April. And this is based on the all-in option, which I believe Todd just showed with all of the options that were on the massing site. I believe it was, it included the aquatics and the dome and everything. This all-in option was analyzed for the revenue that it would bring in for operations. This is completely separate from the capital. But what the operations would bring in in fees and rentals and charges to participants and users of the facility. And then it also looked at the expenses that it would take to run the facility. And then to show whatever potential profit or business subsidy which would be required of the city to help finance the costs of operations. The annual subsidy that they came up with at Ballard King was about $639,000. This compares very reasonably with similar operations that we've looked at throughout the metro area, including Shoreview, including Maplewood, including Forest Lake, and including Andover. These revenue and expenses are not out of line for similar facilities. And as a matter of fact, they compare very closely to them. The fees charged, particularly in the area of aquatics, do not cover the costs. And this is reflected by the fact that 60% of this subsidy item was due to the aquatics. In Ballard King's analysis, they stated that approximately $190,000 would be there for revenues, but that the costs would equal about $574,000 a year in expenses. So obviously, we have to take into consideration the capital side, but you also need to know what it's going to cost to run it, because it would be a city facility that the city would be responsible for.
So if you are following along at home chronologically, we are almost to today. So that brings us to our most recent study, which was conducted in partnership with the YMCA and was conducted by ANA Research. We got a lot of good data. It was a very thorough and comprehensive study. And here to take us through that is John Steinlicht with ANA Research. We did not all plan to wear blue blazers in case you're curious.
Thank you. I'm a member of the team. Mayor, City Council, city employees and citizens. My name's John Steinlicht. I'm the President and CEO of Anderson Niebuhr and Associates. I'm very happy to be here. And my presentation is going to be a little bit different. There's going to be a lot of data. I apologize in advance. So I'm going to try to highlight what makes sense and try not to speak too much to what it says. But it's going to take me a little bit of reading and a little bit of pointing to, to get through it. I just want to say I'm very impressed with what I've seen so far. We do this all over the Twin Cities. And one of the benefits of working with us is we actually can benchmark what we've done in Forest Lake. I don't know if you came along that path as well. But we can show you what the information actually shows, what's happened in the past and decisions that were made years ago that have played out to be pretty close to what we predicted with the information that we're going to provide. It's not quite, not quite to the point of saying if we build it, will they come? But it's something similar to that. The methodology, basically, you know, how did, what did we do? Why did we do it? How'd we do it? It was a scientific survey. So it's research that you take a population such as Cottage Grove, and you generalize that by selecting individuals who will respond to this survey that match up to the demographics of your, basically the census is what we use. And we'll get into that to show you that we matched it up remarkably well, which is great. And what that means is that you'll have a high level of confidence in the responses to be able to predict what your general population is thinking. So as we go through the methodology, we'll go through the respondent profile and do a little bit of overviews and then get into the summary of the findings. Basically, we chose the demographics, working with Zach and others, to determine exactly how we wanted to do this. We have a primary and a secondary marketplace, but we're using three different zip codes. 016 is the primary and the others surrounding it. That's where our resident population was. We have two different groups of people that we surveyed. We surveyed the people who live in Cottage Grove who are members of the YMCA in Hastings or Woodbury. So that population's going to have some different views and some different experiences. But they're very important, because you'll find out what their preferences are as to whether or not they're interested in joining a YMCA here. And can I use that term YMCA for, for the sake of the argument? We did it just a month ago. Basically, it was a panel for the research that we used for residents and followed up with phone calls, both cell and landline to reach people. And with the YMCA, it was a, an entire web survey as well with no phone calls. And basically, we, to the scientific level of it, we have a plus or minus five and a half, basically, percent confidence interval, which has a little bit of swing to it, but that is the standard confidence level that you want in any type of research that you're doing for this type of important study. A little bit of the, you know, just kind of like a dashboard. And it shows the demographics. And if you can see color, hopefully, the light blue on the far right of the graphs that are up there show the census data. And the green is the member results. So again, these are people living in Cottage Grove that are members of the Y currently in a different city. And the blue are the residents of Cottage Grove. So we see that we're representing the younger. We're, we're fairly close on that. We're, we're right on with the middle population and right, very close here. And then we've also got a, a good matchup with the census data on our, I guess you could say, senior citizens. The gender population lines up well. The geography, we, as we said before, we're using a primary market with 50, 55, 016. And then 033 and 129 being the secondary markets as well. We have three different income categories, under $50,000, $50,000 to $100,000 and $100-plus. And then we've got our household membership, or household breakouts, with kids, without kids, the household size, and the, the ages of the children as a breakout to determine some of those amenity questions and child, and health, childcare that actually will come up later in the research. There are four key questions that really establish, and this is a relationship with the YMCA, so that before you make that decision to move into the partnership with the YMCA, you want to know what your citizens are feeling about that. And those four questions are, I'd like to be a part of the YMCA and want YMCA to be a part of my community. The YMCA will improve quality of life in Cottage Grove. I support the proposed location. It's a good idea for the city and the YMCA to partner. The results that we have here are very positive. We have a little bit more favorability with the green bar, which are the members currently of the YMCA, so they're a little bit more familiar. But they're extremely positive responses from your community. The next graph to the right is the overall amenities. And I would be here way too long to read all of this. But in, in essence, it's detailing the specific areas in which your residents have responded to the survey based on the question that gives them an opportunity to select which amenities they would like to participate in and think are more important. Cardio, fitness machines, strength, outdoor sports dome, and strength training, indoor lap pool, et cetera. When you get down to the bottom left corner, we have the information that shows very, very overview, top line, expecting somewhere around 3,300 members that will join the community center. And we'll get into more detail on that. The last bottom right corner, maximum reasonable property tax increase. We have breakouts where it shows $5 to $20 per month. We've got a very reasonable 50% agreement. When we go to the $21 per month and above, it starts to drop off. And we've also got a fairly significant not sure category, which is a little bit different than what we typically see. But that's something we can talk about a little bit more. And we've got a 19%, basically 17% of residents who are not members of the YMCA that say they do not support a tax increase. That's actually significantly lower than what we typically see. So again, less resistance to this than what you typically see. Oh, boy, I can't read this. I'm sorry. But I think it's important to touch on some of the highlights. Community support. We just went through the four questions. It's, it's high. A similar statement about agreement with the city and the YMCA has been asked in other areas. There's more agreement in Cottage Grove. There are things such as residents who have children that you would imagine are significantly more in agreement with all four statements, or they're more favorable to this development. Residents 65 and older are significantly less likely than younger residents to support the YMCA and the city partnership. Part of that may be some of the fixed income issues and the resistance to the tax increases. And residents with higher incomes are more likely to support this. The property tax increase, I guess we have to pay special attention to that area in which we're really differentiating between a wide variety of numbers here. But we've got $5 to $10, 30% respondents are in favor. 20% between the $11 and $20 as a maximum per month. So if you add those two together, which we have to be careful when we look at this, but we've got a 50% favorable position, if you will, on between $5 and $20 increase. And that's a big swing, especially for the finance people. So that's, it's a, it's, we differentiate that. We can get into more details a little bit later. And as I mentioned earlier, the 70% of Cottage Grove who do not support a tax for this particular venture would be significantly less than the 28% that we see in other market studies. So I don't know what that is attributed to, but it's a significant difference. Why don't I go on to the next slide? Who would join? We have an extremely positive response here. 59% of residents who may or may not be involved in some sort of recreational club or membership. 93% of the members who are residents here of another YMCA are likely to join. So those are terrific numbers. Family memberships, most sought after. 50% of the residents, family, obviously, kind of makes sense. And family with children as well. Likely joiners, heavy users. It's an interesting concept. We're really seeing people in Cottage Grove who want to be involved in this and, and exercise on a, on a frequent basis. So that's a, a positive. As I mentioned, the residents with kids are more likely to be joiners. Females more likely to be joiners than, and the, the younger group, the 18 to 34, more likely to be joiners compared to ages 35-plus. Primary market residents compared to secondary market residents, 68 to 42. Not quite sure about that. Maybe there's something to do with the location. Compared to the market studies that we've done, resident interest in joining a recreational community center is slightly above average. 59% for Cottage Grove, and the benchmark is 53. Survey results suggest projected annual membership just under 3,300 units. And that's a terrific number as well. Desired programming. We get into this a little bit more in detail. But again, I think that's part of the analysis of looking at whether or not that matches up with what your plans have brought you with the other ways in which you've reached out to the community. We significant, there are differences between categories of demographics. So obviously, youth, teen, and older adults have some different ideas that bubble to the top. And we'll get into those a little bit more with the data that shows here. Again, I'd like to kind of breeze through this. And I think maybe this information will be available so someone can look at it more carefully rather than go through all of this. There are, this is a combined member and resident, kind of like a graduated to the top. What do people want, they, they see as the most important, that they think is the most favorable to them. And as you go across the, you can see differences by the demographics of childcare and, and teen and youth and, and older adult programming. This breaks it out by the member between, the members and the residents. So it shows the favorability that people have toward cardio fitness in people who live in Cottage Grove who are members of a YMCA versus just residents. And it goes down the list to, to really show the, the, the fact that people who are currently members of YMCA are much more favorable in general. Detailed amenities and programming. There is a strong preference for an outdoor multipurpose sports dome. Performance space, flexible meet, meeting and rental space kind of drops down a little bit. Maker space and adult sport leagues kind of drop off a little bit further as well. As far as an indoor play area, which I heard mentioned earlier, there's a 43% interest with people who are Y members. And there is a 42% so in the residents. Frequency of use. We've got details on that based on members and non-members. And once, one to two times a week looks like the most frequent response. This is where it kind of gets into the teen programming. And, and we also have a breakout where we actually ask whether or not people would be willing to support a, some sort of, an amenity that included an additional fee. And we see very strong support for sport leagues, swimming, summer camps, et cetera. And on the teen programming side, it's consistent with the other information that we shared earlier. For the older adults, similarly, we've got the same kind of list with the breakdown between members and members of YMCA and residents. And on the childcare slide, we're breaking out a very small segment of people who say that childcare expenses, things that they, they will be purchasing or are purchasing. And they're answering questions based on the fact that they're doing it. We broke it out into two different areas, members and residents. And we've got full-time, part-time, and don't know. Strong interest in part-time for people who are current members of YMCA and living in Cottage Grove. Drops a little bit down as far as the number of people of residents who are not members, but still strong interest equally split between full-time and part-time. And some different breakouts for the types of childcare options that are available. We've got some information that shares what the scholarship need would be in the community. And we have breakout between members saying 10% is exactly the same as residents. And, which is a, a consistent number, relatively small, but certainly a real number. And the familiarity with the YMCA as it pertains to residents only, not people who are members, is very high. is very high. This next slide is the, where we start to get into the likelihood of joining, and if you build it, will they come? We have the three different responses. Definitely join in blue, as you see in the top bar. Probably join, green, and maybe join, and then the other side of it, which is, I'm not going to, don't plan on it, definitely will not, and insignificant, don't know. When we get to the residents, we have a, obviously a little bit of falloff, but it's still a high number when it comes to the favorability of joining the, this facility. The benchmark data down below show that Cottage Grove is at 59% likelihood to join versus all the studies done around the metro area. They fall well below that, 53%. The type of measure, membership desired, is an interesting breakout, very significant because the family membership is going to fall into a category, it's going to be more people, but it's also going to be more membership fees. The dual membership and the individual membership broken out in resident shows a strong favorability to, going to have a lot more families participating. And in the members who are currently Y members in other towns, drops off a little bit as far as the number of family. And as we can see, we will see a little bit later, there'll be some other demographics that'll break that out. Frequency of use, again, got an opportunity to ask people how often they think they're going to use it, these facilities, and that was only asked of the people who had the likelihood to join, and we show a very strong, exercise-conscious community here. This slide is basically a graphic to represent the fact that if we look at those top three responses to likelihood to join, and everyone that said they were either highly likely, somewhat likely, or very, just maybe, maybe likely, we would put them in a maximum category, add all the numbers up. We can't do that. We've done this for 30 years, and we've come up with some formulas that represent statistical modeling that actually will represent something very close to what reality will show over the last five years. We've studied the progress that we've made in some of these estimates, and we're right on the money. So we actually discount for what their responses were, and we discount whether or not they're a resident or a current member. So how this table falls out is we get to the point where we get that 3,300 projected members. We call it obtainable members. We've asked people at $70 per month or 840 annually, so they know they're going to have to pay some money, and it was a little different than your numbers. $70 is somewhat of an average for the metro area. We have 529 members who are currently members of Y that live here in this community that will join. And the next area is residents, and we have a 1,225 that they're going to be paying, that particular one, they're going to be paying $129 a month for a family, and the seniors, $45 a month. And the last category is the secondary and residents, so it's the other zip codes beside the primary, and that falls into the, I forget, 1,533. So the calculation for how much revenue is generated by that will be a fairly easy process to go through, but it shows a high level of support for this particular event, this project. This breaks out just pretty much similar to what we looked at before, and it's extremely positive. Only people who are living in the city of Cottage Grove. And I think as we look at the benchmark data, you see that running up the scale. We did a study recently with another community that you all know that I won't name. I think they were in the 50s that we recently did, and you know, there's a, I think part of the positive nature of all the different outreach programs that you guys have put forward has probably created some awareness and some interest, and that shows in this This breakout, I won't go through, but it's a statistical table that literally will show you what each of the categories of demographics will render when it comes to the support by demographic. Some of the most, more significant, as I mentioned earlier, with the higher income, they're more favorable. And we also asked some questions about the proposed location, which we did name, just to make sure that that was, we did name a proposed location. The improved quality of life and YMCA in the community. Maximal reasonable property tax increase. As I mentioned earlier, this is a little bit more detail. If we roll the two numbers up between the $5 to $10 and $11 to $20 per month per household, we see that we can say 50%. But again, if we say that someone who's favorable and responded to this survey with five, expecting $5 per month, and it comes across at 20, we're going to see that number go down, unfortunately. So the reality of it is, we broke this out to be specific, to try to get the responses that we were hoping to, you know, be able to credibly and validly represent from what your resident population believes, and that's what it shows. The one thing that I do want to say is that the not sure category, and there's two different things on the right side of the graph, the not sure is higher than what we typically see, and the do not support a tax increase is lower, significantly lower than we typically Again, this is another breakout of that, so that you can look at the demographic groups that will help you determine what the, some of the issues are that you may need to be concerned about. Unmet community needs. This was a question that simply asked what community needs not met, being met in Cottage Grove, and the people who are members of YMCA who live in Cottage Grove, water, aquatics facility, top box, sports and fitness, dropping down substantially, down to 28%. On the resident side, 37%, water, aquatic facilities, sports and fitness, dropping off significantly. So that's what they're looking for. I believe this is the last slide. You can all wake up now. They belong to a fitness center. The local residents who belong in, asked of residents, obviously, we're not going to ask the members of the YMCA. And they belong to these other facilities. We've got a breakout of that, and the real interesting part of it is continue my membership at my current facility, and the overwhelming majority of people are going to switch, who are members of the YMCA in other towns, they'll switch to the new one here in Cottage Grove. We'll see 23% continue their membership at the facility named above that's not the YMCA. 25% will switch to a membership at the new facility. Maintain my current membership but utilize the rec center when needed, and then unsure. So I think that's it. Any questions? Just keep going?
As many people are aware, the YMCA was a partner of the cities in conducting this ANA study. The representative that we've been working with, with the YMCA was unable to be here tonight, but has provided a statement that I will read into the record now. Dear council members, thank you for the opportunity to partner with the city to survey your residents and better understand their interest in a community center and its associated amenities that best meet the residents' needs. The YMCA is currently reviewing the data and will be meeting with city staff over the next few months to determine feasibility and next steps. We look forward to future conversations on how the YMCA can support the city and its residents. We appreciate and value your partnership. That statement coming to us from Amanda Novak, the YMCA Senior Director of New Development. So we've gotten you to a point where we are now ready to present a few options for you to consider. There will be six of them, and following our city administrator presenting them, our finance director will join us again to talk about the financial implications. She will be very happy at this point because she will use a chart, which is her favorite thing in the world. We will start with city administrator Jennifer Levitt.
Mayor and members of the council, tonight you do have an 11-by-17 sheet to aid in following along. We have provided it to the residents and the audience, and we have made it available as well to the cable commission to provide for reference through our discussion. Now, as you've realized this evening, there's been a tremendous amount of work and ideas and data. I know some of you really like data, and so we hope that that has helped aid in some decisions. But as we look at this project, we know, and you have challenged us to really look at options and how we can facilitate this. So the first option that is before you is option number one, which is at the shops of Cottage View. This is the all-in facility. This is where we have the YMCA, and we'll use them as our partner tonight to talk about aquatics and community rooms and fitness, and we also have early childhood education. Now, just to be absolutely clear with you, the school district and the board has signed a memo of understanding with the city of Cottage Grove to be a partner with us because they see a lot of positive synergy with this facility and what it can offer to our residents. Also, this option contains the indoor playground, teaching kitchen, gymnasiums, and performance spaces. And as we had heard through that community engagement, we really see the lobby area being a really versatile gathering place for performances as well as we engage our arts community. When we look at option number one, we do have a total capital cost of $44.71 million. I want to be very clear when we talk about that total capital cost, that includes the building construction, land acquisition, the actual infrastructure, and the soft costs for development of the project. Now, with this option number one, the annual operating subsidy is $654,000. And as you remember earlier in the presentation, most of that subsidy is related to aquatics in this analysis, and so the aquatics facility does increase that operating subsidy. With this, we would assume partners with the YMCA and the school district, and we would see the facility being really a joint partnership between the city and our partners for that option. Option number two is at the shops of Cottage View as well. Now, this is really looking at what we believe is kind of the core gathering place for the community, and this comprises approximately 22,000 square feet of gathering space. So that is all the ones that are colored and labeled here, and that contains the indoor playground, community rooms, performance space, and that partnership with the school district. Now, as with any of these projects, we would ensure that however we position the building here, it preserves future opportunities and partnerships. One of the key things in developing those partnerships is actually the data that ANA has presented to us this evening. That'll help continue to foster and provide us potential future opportunities for partnership on that site. Think about coffee shops and how we do swim lessons and other recreational amenities. And also, as we've continued to build these options, and I know there are six of them, but we're really being responsive to that data that we're receiving throughout this process. Option number two has a total capital cost of $13.6 million. It has an operating subsidy of only $15,000, because this does not contain that aquatics facility, and the actual playground itself is a money generator and doesn't have a lot of operating losses with it. And with this, this would contain our partnership with the school district, and we'd have that joint partnership. Option number three is unique, because we want to say, okay, well, what if we just did the YMCA concept at the shops of Cottage View? So this is just building the aquatics, the fitness and the gym, and not necessarily building that community gathering space. So let's just, you know, get a mindset of how much does just that box cost if we were to walk through that alone? And in this case, the capital cost is $30.28 million, and the subsidy is still very high because it has that aquatic component of $639,000. The partnership, once again, in this option, is the YMCA, and we would have a partnership with them. Now, council, you have asked us through this process, is there any other available land that the city of Cottage Grove owns that we could potentially facilitate a site so that we could reduce that cost of purchasing the land and maybe potentially finding a reduction in the actual infrastructure cost? So this is an out-of-the-box idea based upon your direction of thinking outside the box, and this is at the Oltman Middle School. The city, as part of that purchase of the property, we have land that is just to the west of the facility that has been graded. The infrastructure is in place, and the road network is there, and the city owns the land. So this option would provide some savings in regards to those. One of the key things, as you have heard in the survey from ANA, that sports dome is definitely a high component that people want to see, and so this example provides that dome, the indoor playground, the community rooms, and we've now started to add that climbing wall component. You really saw there was a lot of interest from the teen population with a high 80% looking for that type of amenity, and this contains the performance space. When we look at this option, the capital cost for this is $13.42 million, and then it has an operating subsidy of about $50,000. We believe through that dome and through the other amenities, there'd be a lot of potential for recovery through leases and rentals of that facility. Now, this has a variety of partners that we can bring to the table with the different tenants, from the CGAA to the East Coast Athletic to the school districts. One of the things just to think about is the natural synergy that that site does offer with the amenities that have been built at the Oltman site. When we look at option number five, I know this was taken off the table, but it's just once again, another option to have in toolbox to consider, because you did challenge us to find other phasing and economical solutions. And so this contains the sports dome, the indoor playground, community rooms, climbing wall, and performance space, and that partnership with the school district. Option number five has a total capital cost of $14.66 million, that same operating subsidy of $50,000 in the partnerships as option four. Now, option number six, going back to really the site that we have analyzed and looked at, and as you saw in ANA's results, had a very strong favorable representation to this site. This contains the golf dome, which is the large white box here, the indoor playground, the community rooms, the climbing wall, the performance space, and our early childhood education partnership, and it preserves that. And we can obviously orient the building to work with other future partners as we work through this process. And it does provide, you know, as I mentioned, ways to integrate other parties, like we mentioned with coffee shops and other retail, to potentially bring additional synergy to the site. The capital cost for this is $18.87 million, has an operating loss of $50,000, and those partnerships stay the same as you saw in options five and, four and five, and the city of Cottage Grove would be the operating manager through that. And now, to run through the detailed analytics and to bring back her spreadsheets for all of you, Robin Rollin.
I have charts, but no graphs. There's a difference. So let's talk about bonds. From the beginning, the city council has directed and given us guidance that this would be a referendum project. And as such, the financing that goes with a referendum project is known as general obligation, property tax-supported debt. And that means that we assume that once the referendum passes and we go down the road of building this facility, any and all funding would be from bonds that are issued for a 20-year period. They would be at an interest rate which today is somewhere between 2 and 4%, depending on which marketplace you're in. Those bonds are 100% paid for, principal and interest, by a property tax levy. Now, there is another option that a lot of other communities use to finance community centers, but we haven't talked about this because it wasn't our guidance. These are lease revenue bonds. Lease revenue bonds are bonds that are issued by an economic development authority. The economic development authority then actually owns the building. They build the building with the money that's generated by the debt or by the bonds that are sold, and then the EDA leases that facility back to the city. And in doing so, the city then makes a payment to the EDA, which And in doing so, the city then makes a payment to the EDA, which just happens to be the exact amount of the principal and interest that the EDA is going to pay. So this requires a property tax levy as well. However, in some cases, like it was with the ice arena back in 2008, sometimes revenues from other organizations are able to be used, such as a lease that we have with the school district, a lease that we have with the CGHA at the hockey arena. That revenue can go towards reducing the amount of the property tax levy. However, as we've shown here with many of the suggestions or many of the options that we're looking at, the revenues, there aren't any additional revenues that would support those lease revenue bonds, so the city would still wind up with a property tax levy that was effectively equal to the bond payment that the EDA would make. I mention these because a number of communities that we've talked about have not gone out for referendum. They have only issued lease revenue bonds through their EDA and supported them with a property tax levy in that fashion. One other thing, lease revenue bonds are more expensive. Their interest rate is usually about a quarter to a half percent higher than general obligation revenue bonds, and that's because they are considered more risky in the marketplace. There's a requirement that there's a lease agreement, and that is usually not a problem, but sometimes it can run into an issue. And so the marketplace considers lease revenue bonds a little bit more risky and therefore be a little bit more expensive. So having said all that, here are those six options that Jennifer just presented. The far-left column is what we're proposing currently for our 2020 property tax levy. You'll see there is no amount in there for the community center subsidy, and there's no amount in there for the community center debt. All of the other six options show both the subsidy amount that Jennifer identified for the different options, as well as the actual annual debt service. That's principal and interest on those bonds for 20 years. The numbers range from the high of a $3.1 million annual debt service payment and a $654,000 annual subsidy, to a low of $965,000 in annual debt for options two and four, and a subsidy of either 15,000 or 50,000, depending on the situation. Options five and six are 1 million and 1.3 million respectively with regards to the debt service and the annual subsidy of $50,000. Now, in these examples, we've combined. Now, there's going to be a year that we're building, and we probably would only have the community center debt service payments, so there wouldn't be the subsidy. But ultimately, what you want to look at, if we're looking at ANA's numbers, you want to know what those two numbers combine, the subsidy and the debt, are going to cost the taxpayers of Cottage Grove, so that we can see if they're within that $5 to $10 window that ANA has basically identified as the sweet spot, so to speak. Also on here, it shows the change in gross levy, and this is as compared to the 2020 proposed tax levy that we're looking at right now. So this shows what the impact is per year of each of the scenarios, each of the options, and it shows the monthly impact. I would draw your eye to the $300,000 line, because that's what we're using as an average. The actual average property in Cottage Grove right now is about $250,000, according to the county, but let's take it up just a bit, because we're building a lot newer, bigger houses, and I think 300,000 ultimately is where we're going to be in a couple of years. Option number one obviously has the highest amount of tax impact per year. On a $300,000 house, that'd be $218 for the year and about $18 per month. Now, that's on the high end that ANA was talking about, that 10 to $20 number, okay? On the low end is about $1.50, and that's for options two and four, and that's an annual increase in taxes of about $18. Option number five and option number six, the last two, whether it was at, I'm sorry, whether it was at the tank farm or at the shops of Cottage View, are well within that $5 to $10 sweet spot that ANA identified. I would also call your attention to option number four, the one on the Altman property, which is the $1.50, which is the low end of that tax impact for residents. Again, including both the capital costs as well as the annual anticipated subsidy. Now, actual numbers are going to vary, and the bond market may go up between now and then, but right now, the number that I used for interest is about 3.75%. The state of Minnesota, to give you a comparison, sold bonds today, and they're AAA, we're only at AA+. But their interest rates today that they got were between 1.9 and 2.2%. So they're on the low end right now. We went a little high on these numbers, so that could vary. These also are for the facility with land and infrastructure. As Jennifer talked about, we could finance the land and the infrastructure with internal funds, but that would really limit the council's ability to do other things. It's nice to have cash and to be able to use that cash to do things in the short term that we may want to do. I do have two other slides that show the facilities without the land and infrastructure. The numbers are similar to what was in your packet. I can quickly run through those if you choose. Otherwise, I would stick with the first two, because that, again, is the most conservative estimates that we have.
And now, all of these slides, I just wanted to wrap up really with a thank you and recognition. Council, you have put in a lot of time and energy in this process to engage the community, to seek answers, to challenge us. We've analyzed the community center from a variety of angles, and your input has been extremely valuable to challenge us to look further. And also, as you saw tonight, there has been a tremendous amount of effort by staff here to do the research, analyze the data, gather it, and so I want to say thank you to staff for their input, and thank you to our partners who have journeyed with us on this process. But I can't leave off our residents. They have really been key. They have been the ones who have been engaging with us, dialoguing, and providing feedback. And so this is really a collaborative effort that brings us here tonight for these discussions. And tonight, with those discussions, we do have two formal actions we would ask the council to take, and that is to accept the community center feasibility report from LEOA Daily and to accept ANA's market study. But really, ultimately, tonight, council, we are looking for your direction for the community center. And with that, I would turn it over to you, mayor.
Okay, so we've been through a lot. So what I would do is, this is kind of an opportunity at the immediate moment here to ask any questions that you might have as part of staff, and I'll start with Councilmember Thede.
So, you know, we had conversations with the county and the library and so forth, and I guess I kind of noticed that, you know, in some of our information, we had the library identified still in option two, but on your overhead, you'd taken that out. I noticed we've got performance space listed. Does option two still include the floor space for the library that was showing, the space is showing on there?
Do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, if you look, if you pull up your option two again. So, you know, we have the green, light green down there. So are the dollars and the numbers that we're showing for option two still include that, any dollars for that library space? Or, because originally, it would have been the county that would have done the infrastructure for the library, right?
Mayor, members of the council, to be clear, at this point, Washington County is still engaging in their strategic master planning related to their library sites. So at this time, they are a little premature for them to be able to make an exact commitment on what location in a partnership. And so at this point in time, we're leaving space available, as I indicated. The key thing is, is however we orient our facility would preserve the right for future partnerships. And I'll leave that very broad, because there's a lot of partnerships that could develop into the future. One thing, though, to be very clear, this option really is only our 22,000-square-foot option. So that is the core items that you see here in the colored boxes. None of our options included the 25,000-square-foot library boxes that were shown. So none of those costs include any library affiliation with them. And so this cost here is literally just the city's portion of that.
So, let's talk about that performance space that you've got listed. What is that? Because I didn't see that labeled or anywhere else.
Mayor, members of the council, the key thing is with the performance space, we have always seen the commons area as that versatile space. So it provides the gathering place. It also provides, you know, creative performance places that could exist within that commons area. So it's becoming very versatile. So think about the Central Park that you've seen in Woodbury. So we see that as that gathering place, and as the architect referenced, it really helps bring in the exterior, you know, areas gathered into that commons. And so that's where we could put the performance space. So that's all contained within the 22,000-square-foot.
All right, so if I look at the diagrams, it's really kind of the common space or so forth?
Correct.
Okay. Council, any other questions? Councilmember Mills.
Go ahead.
I'm curious on the subsidies, when we're taking a look at those, are we taking into account at all any of the partnership funds that would come in to maybe help offset that? Or is it purely that is like the number in looking at those partnerships that we're going to subsidize?
Mayor, members of the council, that's a great question, because when we actually look at the total capital here, we're telling you the total capital that we'd have to bring to it. The actual leases that we would get from our other partners would buy down the capital to help make those, I'll call them mortgage payments for the bonds, whichever bond option you would choose to pay that. The subsidy is the actual operating loss that we would experience annually, and we would not see partnership on the actual operating loss, except with the YMCA, depending on how that deal is structured for that operating loss. Typically, they have a specific cap of operating loss, and the city would have to pick up any additional operating loss above their cap exposure. So, great question.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Thede, did you have something else you want to add?
Yeah, so, you know, if the YMCA came in and so forth, we had a wonderful amount of data. It was even a little bit more data than maybe I, but anyway, great amount of data, and I like the data stuff. But, so, with YMCA stuff and the questions that went out, I mean, we found out what people said they were willing to pay in their increase in tax, property tax, so forth. In terms of the, you know, the membership fee and so forth, that was just set at the one number, you know, for the different level of memberships, like the $70 for individual, et cetera. So we really didn't get a feeling for, we got a feeling for how much, you know, if that $70, whether they'd be willing to participate or such, but we didn't really see, well, what if the membership was different now? And again, in this, the subsidy, the subsidy and the operational costs here, operational subsidy doesn't include any, anything for, like, what people would pay in for membership. So even if people, we had the 3,000 members, and they were paying an average $100 a month, would that money be going toward reducing the subsidy we see here or not at all?
Mayor, members of the council, the fees that would be paid to the Y would be the Y's money.
Okay.
The option number three that we're looking at identifies a Y version, correct?
Eleven.
Okay, so that's got the aquatics, that's got, what it's basically saying is, if the YMCA had all of their members, they'd have the money from their members, the members' fees would pay for some of that, their, you know, operational costs. And then the subsidy that we have identified is that amount which would be over and above the revenues that come in and the expenses that are involved. And as Jennifer said, the Y usually has an agreement, and I can't speak because they're not here, but they've talked to us in very general terms of what that agreement looks like, and it talks about limits to the amount of subsidy that they would be willing to use out of their pockets versus what the city would be responsible over and above that. And that would be part of a negotiation that we would do with the Y.
So if we said that really the membership, if we had to cover half of the, or some of this subsidy with membership costs, you know, such that maybe the individual membership instead of $70 might be 110, we don't really know.
We don't really know.
Okay. Okay. Council, any other questions at the moment for staff?
Mayor, I have.
Councilmember Butt.
I wanted to make sure, because I saw a slide earlier that mentioned the National Guard, and the Minnesota National Guard has what they call the Training and Community Center, TAC. And were they ever asked to participate in this? I know they're over there behind 80th and the old side of town.
Mayor, members of the council, yeah, we did reach out to the National Guard. I had a couple of phone conversation with them early on in the process, and they just wished to be kept abreast of the happenings. As the, as the study continued on, they basically told me that they weren't in a position to move at the moment, so they didn't completely eliminate themselves from the conversation, but they said they weren't, they weren't at a time in their facility programming to make a move at that point.
Do they own the space they're currently in right now?
They do.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So if there's no, at the moment, if there's no other questions, I guess what I'd like to do for council is, there's three items up there. Two of them, I think, are fairly simple with motions and seconds. And the third one is what I'd like to do before we get into that, is I would like to read kind of a statement and then let everybody bring their two cents in, and then we'll make a decision as a council. So what I think we'll do is, I'll look for a motion, if somebody would be willing to do that, to accept and place on file the community center feasibility report from LEOA Daily.
I'll make that motion to accept the report.
All right, so we've got a motion by Councilmember Mills, second by Councilmember Thede. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
And I would move that we accept and place the ANA's Cottage Grove market study, that we accept a motion to accept and place, and what did I say?
Unfiled.
Unfiled, oh, I'm reading from a distance, sorry about that. Accept and place on file the ANA's Cottage Grove market study.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Thede.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Butt. Any further discussion there? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. So what I'd like to do is, I'm going to kind of, I put something together, I just wanted to read to the council, and then I think we'll give the council each member if they have something they want to share or an idea, and then we'll look what direction we want to go. So what I'll share with the public and the staff out there is, the process of looking at of looking at creating a community gathering place in Cottage Grove has been discussed since I was a young child growing up in this town. In the last 10 years, we have specifically investigated what we should develop as a community center, where it should be located, who are what partners we would want to be as part of this project, and how much will it cost, uh, the Cottage Grove taxpayers. We did many surveys, had various citizens' task forces, and a variety of community input over the last 10 years to arrive at where we are today. I've always believed, as mayor, that our job on the council is delineate between a want and a need. A need is specific to the public safety, health, and welfare of our citizens. It is our job to make sure our first responders, public works personnel, have the tools and facilities to do their jobs effectively. Over the past 10 years, we built this beautiful public safety city hall building to serve our citizens. We built a new central fire station to provide the proper facility to stage fire and emergency response, uh, for Cottage Grove. We are about to open the Hero Training Center for our first responders. This joint facility with our partner, the City of Woodbury, is a new state-of-the-art training facility that will make sure our first responders can deal with all issues in today's challenging environment. A want is something we would love to have, but is not a specific need. I've always wanted to provide our citizens with a specific place to gather, a place where our community comes together. I've been to many other communities and visited numerous facilities to see what others are doing to create a community gathering place for everyone to enjoy. I believe we are at that point where we can move forward with a recommendation to the citizens of Cottage Grove on a new and innovative facility that we can all be proud of. We also need to be understanding of what we can afford. Cottage Grove is a very fiscally sound city. We continually receive awards year after year for managing our finances. We have been recognized as one of the top fiscally sound communities in the entire United States of America. I take great pride in how we carefully manage your tax dollars. And our bond rating is, as Robin mentioned earlier, double A+, which is very good for a city of our size. So tonight, we have been presented with six different options to either approve a process to move forward to the voters, or say no, not at this time. I believe we are at the point where we have identified our key partners to create a special place to gather and play. Community education, the Cottage Grove Athletic Association, the Eastbridge Athletic Association, the School District, and the Youth Service Bureau. We can create the beginning of a community center with option six. This includes a sports dome, a 22,000 square foot Central Park with an indoor playground, community rooms, a climbing wall, performance space, programming space, early childhood education, and a senior center. We can do this by going to a referendum in November of 2020. The location would be at the Shops at Cottage View, near the new entrance of the Ravine Park off Keats Avenue, not too far from Walmart. We have marketed this plan to developers in the past three months, and received very positive responses to move forward in developing this area with both commercial, restaurant, and high-density housing options. Our goal would be to begin construction in spring of 2021. How much will this cost? As Robin mentioned earlier, for a home in today's market, on average of $300,000 would be $3.92 a month, or $47 a year. Our annual operation, operating subsidy would be around $50,000, and that is also included in the $3.92 number. We are planning to purchase approximately 14 to 16 acres to build this facility, with the expansion op, option of a possible future YMCA. As noted, the YMCA is not ready to break run with us on our timeframe, but they are interested in Cottage Grove and want to be a partner with us, and we will continue to explore that option. The owner of the land is giving us a great deal on the land. This will allow us to look at additional options as we move forward, planning for the future. We have already entered, uh, or, I'm sorry, we have already had letters of intent from various parties who want to join us in creating this awesome space for all of us to use. Over the next year, we will move these letters of understandings to specific commitments, and begin to design the facility to share with all the voters of Cottage Grove before we go to referendum in 2020. I want all of you to be informed and aware of what this will look like and what it will cost. You will notice, I did not mention the library. Uh, the library located in Cottage Grove is run by Washington County. Though the City of Cottage Grove, city, I'm sorry, the Cottage Grove City Council unanimously passed a resolution of support asking Washington County to work with us to add the library to this unique community gathering place, they decided not to participate at this time. So the City of Cottage Grove is moving forward without them. They may come back in the future to reconsider that decision, but we believe what is best for our community is to create this awesome gathering space with recreational amenities, with those amen, with those amenities who are excited about the, uh, I'm sorry, partners that are excited about the future of this project. So I do ask my colleagues on the city council to vote to recommend option six, and begin the process of creating an amazing gathering place in our community, one we have been waiting for and dreamed of for many years. A project that has been researched and recommended by various citizens, advisory commissions, surveys, and community meetings. It's fiscally sound, and allows us options for growth in the future. So that's my comment and recommendation for the council. And so what I would do is, I'm gonna turn to my left here and see if, uh, Councilmember Thede, if you have anything you want to add, or state.
Well, obviously, I, you know, I, I'd love to be able to, to, to say, let's, let's get a, you know, big, big center, and, and, you know, a lot of people want aquatics and everything like that. But at the same time, we've got to, to, to be very mindful, I believe, of, of how much money is available, and, and, uh, you know, affordability. Um, you know, so I, I think we've, we've talked about that, and, and while this looks like it kind of fits, I mean, obviously, before we actually get into it, the numbers will, will change a little bit, will be into another budget year, and, and that'll have some more dynamics on, on market value of homes and things like that. So, so I think, I think the fact that we, we, we realize that unfortunately, right now, we probably can't, can't provide an aquatics facility, or, unless some other type of grant, or some other type of, of deal comes, comes through. I think a lot of times you'll see in some of these other cities, when you look at, how do they afford some of the aquatics and things of that nature, it's, it's, it's kind of some sort of special grant, or something like that, that they, they might've gotten to be able to do that. Um, in terms of, of location, I know there's a lot of people that say, oh, jeez, you know, it seems like that's way out in the, in the boon docks, but, uh, down by Shops at Cottage View, but, but if you kind of look at how things are positioned regionally, if you, you know, there's a lot of people that would like the sports dome, and I mean, you've got, uh, Beelenberg, or Health East, whatever it's called now, you know, and, and if you look at, like, regional, uh, providing kind of regional, uh, amenities and so forth, something like having something up at Oldman is, is really pretty, pretty close to that. And, and, you know, maybe, you know, so, so probably the Shops at Cottage View, uh, wouldn't be bad in terms of being able to service not just Cottage Grove, you know, and, and, but, but some of the other people in the, um, uh, you know, Denmark Township and things like that. Uh, although we'd have to look at, at, you know, some sort of fee-based service, just like, you know, I think Beelenberg does, right? They, uh, different, different people, you know, get charged different things, same as the Ice Arena, right? So that, there's some revenue potential there, uh, which, which would be good. Um, I do think that the Shops at Cottage View location probably has the greatest flexibility for us to accommodate different things that might change in the future. Um, you know, if the, the county came back, uh, you know, in a few years and said, well, you know, we really would like to, to be able to expand some different things and such, uh, and have a bigger space, and then potentially, it's a Shops at Cottage View, and, and, with proper planning, could, could accommodate, you know, the, you know, some library space and things like that, if we, uh, lay it out properly. Um, so, I guess, in terms of the different options, uh, you know, in terms of having a desire to, to, you know, provide a community center, and, and, along with, though, and I'd also say that we need to continue to look at, how do we use the amenities we already have to, to kind of fill some of these needs? Because I think some of these things that we get in the survey and so forth, you know, people say, well, you know, I want this, or I want that. Well, we've got this or that, you know, it's just, for some reason, even, either they're not in proximity of, of that, or, or they aren't really, you know, kind of knowing what every, everything that we do have. And maybe it's just providing better transportation between some of the amenities we have and things like that. Um, but if, if we were to say, kind of what direction would we want to go, understanding that it could, could change, you know? Also, I, I would, I would say probably, uh, you know, six, and, and that really is, is driven mostly by, I think, the location. You know, even though some people think it, like you say, it's, it's kind of out of the way, it'll be close to the Ravine Park, and, and it has connection to the whole neighborhood, you know, neighborhoods and, and so forth, in, uh, uh, off of 90th Street, and, and things like that, through the trail system and, and everything else, and, and the commercial area to, you know, like the Walmart, and, and just, um, that sort of thing. Also, I think that the, and I'm talking too much, but, but also, I think that, that the, the community center activity will probably kind of be the catalyst, and maybe the kickstart, to, to have that area develop down there, uh, you know, and, and, and start moving forward with some of that, which then also produces, uh, uh...
Tax revenue.
Properties and, and such in that area, which, um, uh, which is obviously something we want to have see done. So, so at any rate, make a long story short, I guess, I, I would, I would probably, looking at the logic of, of everything, and, and understanding that we're, we're just kind of giving direction here, and, and we've got more budget cycles to go through to, to really kind of nail it down, before we put a referendum out there next year, I would, uh, I would go along with number six.
And I should throw that out there, too, because, just so I say it, because I, I know that originally, we talked about doing a referendum this year. I'm not recommending that. I think we need more time to define and set our partnerships, and that's why, that's why I'm seeing 2020, so you're in agreement with that.
I'm in agreement with that.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Butt?
Uh, real cut and dry, as a business owner here in Cottage Grove, that, I actually believe in the making Cottage Grove a destination location, and having the amenities, uh, for people to live, work, and play in our community, it's, it's, it's a necess, necessity. I, I think, you know, it is a want, and most people want it, and it's, it shows in the, uh, uh, in the surveys, that it, it's, it's just a matter of time, and we need to do this. And so I am in agreement with option number six, and a referendum in 2020.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Mills?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, a couple highlights, just to kind of, uh, go back even from our previous meeting that we discussed on it. Thinking about the economic development, how having it at Cottage, the Shops at Cottage View, um, makes sense, because it's gonna help us with just developing that area. Um, we also have the letter of intent of, that's where we were planning to kind of go, that's where we've been looking. I think that is, um, I'm still in agreement on, on that, focusing in that. Leaves lots of options for other partners, whether it is the library bringing a branch there, or if they're gonna move down there, or other partners that may want to join us, maybe that we haven't even, um, talked to at this point. So it gives us that room, gives a really good synergy of working with all of that. Um, and I, I do think the dome is important, because I think that is a, um, somebody who's come out strongly, speaking strongly about doing the dome, and my understanding is that's pretty well subsidized, um, through that partnership. So I think that's important to have that land space available for that dome. Um, I, and I do agree we need to do a referendum. I am a little concerned about trying to push to break ground in 2021. That's a little bit of hesitation on my part of, of, we've got so many projects going on, and looking at all the financing that's going on. Um, I have concern about that. Um, so that, that's where I stand. I do like the option six. I do like where the numbers fall, just still a little bit hesitant on, you know, are we strapping ourselves with too much? But if the voter, voters say yes, okay, but it still makes me a little bit concerned in looking at that. So that's my place on that.
Sounds good, and, uh, thank you. And Councilmember Dennis?
All right. Well, it looks like, looks like we have a, a super majority here already. Um, first, I would like to, um, take a moment to thank our staff team who, uh, did an amazing job, uh, and we've, we've gone down a long and winding path to get where we are right now. Uh, it wasn't necessarily always easy, but I think we learned some things about the process and about ourselves together, um, by going through this. So thank you for that. Um, we have done what we were asked to do. Uh, I've been through two election cycles, and, uh, I've heard, uh, especially in 2014, there was a major call for this on the doors, that people were saying, you know, we would like to have a place for our family, for our kids to go, and be part of something. And I think going through this, and listening, and seeking to understand, and doing all of the incredible due diligence that we have, uh, we have come up with a very viable option for the community, and, uh, it's been well researched, and it's logical, it makes sense, it satisfies many needs that we would have here for people. Uh, I do believe it is imperative with the rest of the council that we give the people their, their day to have their voice in this. Um, we are representatives, we're hired by the people and trusted to make decisions about something of this magnitude, especially with a 20-year lifespan of, of mortgaging out, and some, uh, covering some fixed costs that we're gonna have to do on an annual basis. The right thing to do is to partner with the community and let them weigh in. Um, I want to give just a, a couple quick thoughts, um, for confidence on this for people. Uh, the first one comes from, uh, economic development. We talk about this a lot, and Mayor, you and I have the opportunity to serve on the EDA. And so, we, recently, we're in Las Vegas, we go every single year to promote our city down at the ICSC, which is the largest retail construction event of its kind in the world. And we market our city and do everything we can to try to bring business and opportunity here that are going to be things that add to our structure and make people happy to be part of living in Cottage Grove. So we had an opportunity this year to, uh, interact with a gentleman by the name of Lee Kruger, who is the president of the St. Paul Port Authority. And, uh, Lee is an absolute expert in economic development, and if you look at the city of St. Paul, they're 10 times our size. And the amount of work that they do, both development and redevelopment, um, is something that even though we're over a half billion here in five years, uh, they probably do that in a single year alone. So, um, he gave us some amazing insights, which, uh, kind of play along into what we do in our business park already, and that is to maintain a certain amount of shovel-ready space, ready to go for businesses and investors that want to come in. And time is of the essence, and time is, is, is important to, to getting money. And so when we are competing with other cities and other locations for opportunity, when we can best fit the need, uh, that gets us a win. And we have been the talk of the town for a long time, in terms of all the success happening in our business park. So to take that mentality and bring that, that philosophy into what we could do here, uh, Lee advised us that it would be in our best interest to do some infrastructure work upfront as we develop and get ready for the Shops at Cottage View, which, by the way, is gonna be probably the last great development opportunity we really have here in Cottage Grove for, uh, both retail and, uh, housing density, uh, in a close proximity. So what the thought is, is that if we, if we bring some of the infrastructure in, what that does is that helps to spur the development. And since, again, time is money, and we want to see things come here, to build our tax base and make our city be more complete, this really adds in and goes hand in hand with our philosophy of being, you know, shovel-ready. So that's a good thing. And then, second on this, when I looked at option, all the options, especially number six, um, I think bang for the buck for all the things that we have here listed out as, as, you know, parts of the amenity, and that's one thing we have to do, is make sure we all understand crystal clear, this is an amenity, it's not a need, okay? So if we do that, and all understand, we're able to have an annual operational subsidy, which is covering fixed business costs of about 50 grand a year, that's not a bad value. We got 37,000 people, divided by $50,000, that's pretty cheap. So those were two things. So those were two things that really spoke to me. I agree with all my colleagues up here that number six is the right thing to do. And I'm happy to, even though my vote wasn't needed, I'm happy to join with the rest of the group unanimously and vote for number six. And then Mayor, if you don't mind, I would like to take us out to make motion, which will fulfill number three, which is providing direction for the future community center. I make motion that the staff accept this, the 5-0 unanimous recommendation that we move forward on option number six and bring this to the voters for referendum in the year 2020.
All right, so if that's good with that, I've got a motion by counsel member Dennis. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by counsel member Mills. Any further discussion? Other than finally, and I told you, two hours will be just under, all right? So thank you, everybody, for that. And all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So again, thank you, everybody, for doing that. Now I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion, counsel member Dennis, seconded by counsel member Thede. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? We're adjourned.